All right. Good morning, everybody. Thanks for being here today. We are here for the Marion County Board of Commissioners Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025, Board Session. It's 9:05 a.m. We're in the Senator Hearing Room at 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. And if you would, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain vigilant, or you'll have to leave. We have decorum in this boardroom, and we will maintain that. Thank you. What do you, what? Well, I got time. Yeah, I don't have to remind you again. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a couple of motions this morning. First motion is remove an item from the action agenda under Business Services, Public Improvement Agreement with Cedar Mill Construction Company LLC for the Marion County Jail Pod D.
I second the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to move public comment to after our proclamations and consent calendar this morning.
I second the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thank you. All right. So we'll start with our first proclamation of the day under Health and Human Services to consider approval of a proclamation designating the month of September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Marion County. Good morning. Good morning. For the record, as usual, please identify yourself.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Laura Sprouse. I'm the Zero Suicide Program Coordinator for Health and Human Services.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. My name's Kelly Martin. I am the Prevention Coordinator for the Mental Health Promotion Suicide Prevention Program for Marion County.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Amanda Egan, the Director of Behavioral Health for Saniam Hospital and Clinics.
Amanda, I love that you're here, and I would love it if you just project your voice so everyone behind you can participate too. Thank you. And Melissa, if you need to come around the dais to take a photo, you're welcome to.
So we're here this morning to bring forward a proclamation for the month of September as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. We have brought this proclamation before you for many years now, and so we want to continue that tradition in just raising awareness about this important, this important issue to our community. I like to always start these conversations with just a brief safety and self-care reminder, even though we're talking about suicide from an informational perspective today, still want to recognize that it can be a challenging topic to address. And so we want to encourage folks that may need additional support around this to reach out to the National Suicide and Crisis Lifeline at 988. You can call, text, or go online at 247-365 for support, or you can call our Marion County Behavioral Health Crisis Center, and the phone number's there on the screen, 503-585-4949.
To start us off, we just wanted to share a little bit of where we are in Marion County around deaths from suicide. So in 2023, which is our most recent data, and there was 60 individuals that died from suicide in Marion County, which is our 10th leading cause of death in our county. And we do take the time, we really look at the rates and things that are happening. We are able to get into some of the data from hospitals and urgent cares and get down to zip code data, looking at where some of the areas that might need a little bit more of assistance. And you can see there's the 97301 in Jervis zip codes have the higher rates of visits to the emergency department for suicide attempts. And so when we see these, we try to focus on these areas to give them more support. And then we are seeing an increase in individuals attending hospitals and urgent care for suicide ideation. While we are seeing that increase, on the whole, we are lower than Oregon. And even though we are seeing that increase, it isn't necessarily a negative thing. It could mean that more people are seeking help, and which I think is really encouraging. And along that same lines, we spend a lot of time talking about 988. You might see the sunshines around or the different posters, which is really a lifeline to people who are struggling. And in 2024, almost 4,900 people reached out in Marion and Polk Counties to 988, which is a 2,000 increase from the year before. So people are really getting more, more focused on getting that help that they need. And even in 2025, the first half, we're still seeing that upward trend. So I think that that's a really good sign that people are really focusing on trying to get more help.
And just for the first six months of this year, over 3,000 people have already contacted 988, and we get that data from our partners over at Northwest Human Services, who are our local broker for the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline. So people are becoming more aware of it and using this resource. We wanted to share today specifically about an initiative that Marion County has been a part of for about, almost eight years now, or excuse me, about seven years, called the Zero Suicide Initiative. And I'm going to go through that a little bit, and it kind of ties into why Amanda's here today with us as well. So Zero Suicide is a national initiative that is developed by the Education Development Center under SAMSA to integrate suicide prevention into all aspects of healthcare systems. It's a really aspirational goal that aims to really transform how our systems care for people who are at risk of suicide. We want to make our settings safer. We want to make sure that people are not falling through the cracks when they need care. And so we are making sure that we are using evidence-based elements to reduce suicide in our practices, which includes like evidence-based treatment, best practice trainings. We're collecting data about outcomes, as well as how we are using the strategies that we're using. And it's ultimately about quality improvement, so making sure that the outcomes for the individuals we serve are best, and that they are staying safe from suicide. The biggest reason why we are doing Zero Suicide is because it does save lives. Almost 40% of individuals have made a healthcare visit, whether that's to primary care, the emergency department, to one of our clinics within the week prior to their suicide attempt. And 95% of people had a healthcare visit within the preceding year. So we're missing some opportunities to make sure that we are screening and treating folks who are at risk of suicide, and we want to address that. So we really want to emphasize that our system of care has an obligation to identify and support individuals at risk for suicide, and we're providing the support to our staff to do so effectively. We have also, across our organization, created more common language around suicide. So for example, we require all of our staff to take at the minimum QPR, Question, Persuade, Refer, suicide prevention training. And that really helps us build a common language and understanding around suicide prevention, and with this shared understanding of best practices. And also, this is really important because this work goes beyond our four walls. All of us have families and communities that suicide and mental health-related concerns can touch. And so by equipping our staff to best care for not only the individuals that we serve directly, they're also serving their families and communities better. So some of the things that we've done since 2018, we've done a lot of awareness campaigns in collaboration with the Mid Valley Suicide Prevention Coalition, which Kelly heads up. We've issued an employee survey to kind of gain an understanding of our employees' attitudes and knowledge around suicide prevention. And we're actually repeating that survey this month, so really excited to get some of the, some new information about how this is working with our employees. We've done employee wellness activities, including bringing like dogs from Paws for Love to do pet therapy visits with our employees. We've done connection activities. We've done, we've provided resources that are tangible to our employees in our break room spaces and other kind of common spaces. We have a caring contacts policy to support our individuals who are at risk for suicide in just giving our employees one more tool to reach out to them to offer support. We have a postvention response plan in the event that an individual in our services or an employee dies by suicide or an otherwise unexpected death, and how we do a trauma-informed and compassionate response to that. One of the things I'm most proud of personally is the training matrix that we have for our employees that outlines who's required to take which trainings based on their job role. And that really, again, has improved the quality of care that we provide to individuals because our folks know what to look for, and they know how to respond when someone is experiencing thoughts of suicide or risk of suicide. And we've built some really meaningful partnerships with community partners and organizations over the past few years, which is why we have Amanda here today. So we're excited to say that Marion County Health and Human Services is no longer the only zero-suicide organization in Marion County. CNM Hospital and Clinics recently began implementing the Zero Suicide Framework. And so I wanted to bring Amanda just to talk about their launch into this initiative and kind of talk about how we are supporting them as well through this process.
Thank you, guys. We're super excited to be on board with the Zero Suicide Initiative, and with the help of Laura and Kelly, we got there. We just did the Zero Suicide Academy in June, and what we have learned is that we have a lot to do. And so we're super excited. We have so far developed a behavioral health committee that is involved in the Zero Suicide Initiative, and we're currently working on improving our policies on what we do, not only in the emergency department, but in the primary care clinics and in the specialty clinics, and developing some shared language and doing, having all our goal in the next two years is to have all of our staff trained in QPR. And then we're also determining what, what training we want for providers, because providers need more training in suicide, and they're, they're, they're not sure what to do, and they often rely on behavioral health, and there's not enough of us. So we're super excited to be on board, super excited for Kelly and Laura and their partnership. They've been so supportive, and we're really glad to have them as partners.
Yeah, and so a couple of things we've done is we've helped them kick off their QPR training. They have 700 staff to train, and so we're going to help them get there. We're also providing some technical assistance with providing copies of documents that we've developed and policies that we've developed to support the Zero Suicide Initiative internally, and so that they don't have to start from scratch or rebuild, or what is it, rebuild the wheel? Reinvent the wheel, that's what it is. Yeah. We don't have to, they don't have to reinvent the wheel. And so I really love that this kind of collaboration exists between our community partners like this, so that we are ultimately helping our entire community live healthier lives, live more fulfilling lives through suicide prevention efforts.
It's overwhelming to do on your own.
I second that, Amanda. We appreciate you so much, and it's exciting to think of the ripples that are going to create when you're getting all of your staff trained and getting that out into the community. So we appreciate that. You've been such great partners, as well as doing the Signs of, excuse me, Signs of Hope and other mental health activities, so we are grateful for you. Looking at September, which is Suicide Awareness Month, and we, some of the community activities that we're doing is we're going to, in partnership with the Mid Valley Suicide Prevention Coalition, we're continuing our coffee sleeves, the Life is Better With You Here logo, which has, spreads that positive message, but also has information about 988, and encourages people to reach out for help when they need that. We have 28 local shops, including Saniam Hospital, that is going to be providing these out there, and we got these great here at Capital Coffee this morning, which is nice. And so like, please, if you do go out to a coffee shop and you see these, please feel free to thank those coffee shops for spreading these messages of hope, because that's how we help make a big difference, is just everybody doing a small bit. We are going to be doing some tabling events at different locations, mainly colleges right now this year, as with college starting, we're going to be going out to our local areas. And as Laura mentioned, making sure that we have our staff trained up and doing community QPR trainings. We've really been able to ramp those up a little bit with some community volunteers and increasing the number of trainers that we have. So far, in the first half of 2025, we've trained over 262 people, which is more than we did all of last year. So it's really been increasing and kind of multiplying, which is exciting.
Is that the QPR training?
The QPR, yes. So, and then our community partners are taking up some of that as well. So some of the different hospitals are doing community trainings, and there's online trainings from different organizations. So we've really expanded that web of support out there. And then I'm very excited, you can see the 988 banner. We started working with sports organizations, because for those of you that have kids that are in sports, that's where you live, is on the sports fields. And so we are excited that we have five more organizations that have been posting up these banners at their locations, and so really being able to get that word out there, that help is available. So Connecting Hope, I love this title. So Oregon Health Authority has started a campaign to raise more awareness around 988. We still have pretty low recognition. I think Marion County, of course, we have a lot higher, but overall statewide, we're still under 30% recognition for 988. And so we really want to get that up there. So what's, I think is so powerful about this, and something that I've been talking about a lot when I'm out in the community, is that 988 is not just for crisis. 988 is there for, you're just having a bad day, and you need somebody to talk to, and you don't have any, maybe have somebody to turn to. So it is, again, with trained counselors that are there 24/7, you're just having some challenges. And so this is the new logo and one of their taglines, and we do have a short video that we wanted to share with you about what some of these will look like.
They're, they're going on TV and streaming platforms and social media.
We all need support sometimes, when nothing feels like you thought it would, when you don't know how to say, "I'm not okay," when life throws you one too many curveballs. You're not alone. Support is just a text or call away. Someone is there to listen 24/7 with no judgment. It's confidential, and it's free. No matter what you're going through, there's support. Call or text 988 anytime and talk to someone who's trained to help.
So this is just a sampling of the video, and they're actually coming out with more in September. And they are going to have billboards all over Oregon. I've already seen some of them in Kaiser and even downtown Salem, as well as Laura mentioned, on streaming devices and on TV. And then just a few highlights of some of the activities that we're doing internally is, again, making sure that our staff is well-trained and that they're supported in what they do. So we're doing some additional trainings. There's some QPR trainings in the community that we're helping to support. And then we do have the Paws for Love coming. If you guys have not done that, that is a bright spot in your day.
Maybe bring Paws to Love for us next year.
We can do that. You know, a lot of us have stressful jobs, and having a few minutes to just kind of decompress is really powerful and allows our staff to be even, serve our community even better. And then we do have a team that we are putting together for the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention's Walk, Walk Out of Darkness, which is on October 11th. This is a large suicide prevention awareness walk at downtown, at the Riverfront Park. I encourage everybody to come by. It's a really powerful event, and we're excited that we're going to have a team there. And then we also do some tabling there as well to give out information. And then finally, just some information about how to connect with us if you have questions. If somebody's interested in scheduling a suicide prevention training, they can reach out to me at their, for their organizations. And we just want to tell you all that we're very grateful that you allow us to come here and talk about this really important project, and just share what's happening around the community. So we appreciate that.
I'll thank all of you for your work. And I just, I'm really grateful that Saniam Hospital is a partner in this work. I know it's kind of a large feat to take on training for 700 individuals, but being able to recognize the sign of somebody in a vulnerable state that you already know about yourself is really important, I think, across the community. And if any little bit of effort that we're putting forward can save one person's life, that, that matters. So would you pass on to Maggie and the rest of the board that we're grateful for their participation? I have a meeting this afternoon with Salem Health, so maybe I can try to persuade them and their 4,000 employees to become a partner in this work. Yeah, I mean, you know, I'm up for big tasks. Yeah, thank you. Commissioners, do you have anything?
Just every year, this is close to my heart, because there's, you know, we're all connected to somebody that's had mental health issues and, and taken their lives. And it's really important work, so thank you. Yep.
Well, does that go with the other Commissioner said? I really appreciate your ongoing work, year in and year out, so thank you for that.
Great. I'll take a motion. Ready? Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve proclamation designating the month of September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Marion County.
I'll second the motion.
I'll motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Commissioner Cameron, would you begin?
Yes, in a matter proclaiming the month of September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Marion County. This matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled public meeting on September 3rd, 2025, whereas mental health is a key component to holistic wellness for individuals of all ages, families, and communities across Marion County. And whereas suicide is a tragic outcome of many complex factors and requires our immediate attention, consistent attention, and appropriate resources for prevention, intervention, postvention efforts, and whereas suicide is the eighth-leading cause of death in Oregon and the 11th-leading cause of death in the United States, and there are an estimated 1.5 million suicide attempts yearly in the United States. And whereas it is estimated that each death by suicide directly impacts over 135 individuals, including family members, friends, loved ones, and by extension, the entire community. And?
Whereas the stigma associated with mental health, suicide, and lived experience with these topics works against suicide prevention by discouraging individuals at risk for suicide from seeking timely, appropriate, and lifesaving help. And whereas Marion County Health and Human Services continues to implement the Zero Suicide Initiative to drive systemic change, remove stigma, and support healthy communities with the bold vision of zero suicides within our community. And whereas the Marion County Health and Human Services Mental Health Promotion and Suicide Prevention Program aims to support the mental health and well-being of our community through thoughtful outreach and collaborative, impactful, and sustainable partnerships. And whereas people experiencing mental health concerns and/or thoughts of suicide need an understanding, empathetic, and encouraging place of belonging as they seek support. And?
Whereas Marion County Health and Human Services is committed to building such spaces of belonging, connection, and safety to support those experiencing thoughts of suicide. And whereas every person and organization has an essential role in supporting suicide prevention, reducing stigma, and saving lives. And whereas Marion County Health and Human Services will continue to foster relationships with community partners to spread recovery, wellness, and prevention efforts throughout our communities. And whereas Marion County Health and Human Services believes that life is better when everyone here can achieve their highest level of health and aspires to a future in which our community is free of suicide. Now therefore, it is hereby proclaimed that the month of September 2025 is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Marion County, dated at Salem, Oregon, this third day of September 2025. Yay. Yeah, we'd love a photo with all of you. Anyone else wants to join the photo? Who wants to do suicide prevention with us?
Where's John? Oh, Melissa. Can I see you this afternoon, too?
You do.
I thought so. Some service awards, I think.
All right, I'll go first. Okay. Ready, one, two, three. Thank you.
One, two, three. Good.
Thank you.
Good job. Nice work.
Okay. And our second proclamation of the day presentation is to consider approval of a proclamation designated the month of September 2025 as Recovery Month in Marion County.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Terry Morgan, and I'm the Health and Human Services Addictions Treatment Services Program Manager.
You look lovely in your purple today.
Good morning. My name is Jeremy Melselman. I'm a person in recovery and a graduate of the His Place program.
Good morning. My name is Candace Aguilera. I'm also a woman in recovery and a graduate from Her Place.
Candace, I know you're not overly shy, but I would love it if you spoke into the microphone when you speak today, so everyone can participate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry, are you going to talk about what those two programs are for the audience?
Yes. Her Place and His Place are Marion County Health and Human Services Addictions Treatment Programs for Parents with Dependent Children Ages Zero to Five, where they can receive treatment services and have their children living with them. It's onsite substance use disorder treatment with supported housing. Thank you. It's very exciting to be here today. I'm here today requesting that September be designated Recovery Month in Marion County. Each year, National Recovery Month is recognized across the United States to celebrate the millions of people who are in recovery from substance use and mental health disorders. This important observance is more than just a recognition. It's a call to increase public awareness, reduce stigma, and promote a deeper understanding of behavioral health and the life-changing impact of accessible treatment and support services. Here in Marion County, we are proud to offer a network of compassionate, person-centered services that support individuals and families in reclaiming their lives and thriving in recovery. This proclamation serves as a public commitment to acknowledge and support those in recovery, the dedicated service providers and partners who walk alongside them, and the community at large that plays a vital role in creating spaces of healing and hope. As a testament to Recovery Month theme, recovery is for everyone, every person, every family, and every community. We are honored to have two individuals with us who will share their personal recovery journeys. Their stories remind us that recovery is not only possible, but also powerful and transformative. By adopting this proclamation, we not only celebrate the achievements of the individuals in recovery, but also reaffirm Marion County's ongoing commitment to accessible, stigma-free behavioral health care for all. At this time, Jeremy's going to share.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing us to be here. This, it's an honor to be here, and I just want to start off by making a statement, and I'm assuming it's okay, because we did say the Pledge of Allegiance was that I absolutely love. I give all glory to God and our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. It was really hard to sum up my story into this brief period of time, but this is what I got. For over 10 years, I was in and out of jail and prison. For over 10 years, I was in and out of jail and prison. My everyday life consisted of getting high on meth and committing property crimes. I had no direction and basically accepted the fact that that was probably going to be the story of the rest of my days on earth. I'm really bad with dates and times, but the time that I can, a date that I can be sure I'll never forget is October 7th, 2021, and that's when my first son, Adrian, was born. Shortly before his first birthday was when I went to jail for the last time. During the 90 days that I was in jail, I learned that Adrian's mom was pregnant. And then a few weeks after that, I found out that Adrian was taken by CPS. The feeling of helplessness I felt after learning that was indescribable. Though I was facing certain prison time, I made a promise to myself and to many others that I would clean out my act when I got out and get my son back. I was released from jail only by the agreement that I would immediately attend a program called City Team in Portland. I didn't even last a day. I came back to Salem with a plan to find my son's mom, who was pregnant and running the streets, help her get clean, and work together to get our son Adrian back. It didn't work out that way. I started using again and spent about six months running around doing the same thing I was doing before. Once I finally came to the realization that it was going to be completely up to me to get my son back, I made the choice to finally get in touch with DHS and see what my options were. And it was at that time that I met Stacy Williams, who is the person who referred me to a brand-new program called His Place. Myself and one other person were the first two people to enter into that program. And I'm proud to say that myself and that other person are also the first people to graduate from that program. When I was about a month or so into the His Place program, I learned that my second son was born and was immediately taken by CPS because he tested positive for methamphetamine. And a week or so after that, because I was in the His Place program and in active treatment, I had my newborn son in my arms. And was the first client at His Place to have a child returned. A month or so after that, his older brother was returned to me as well. If it wasn't for programs like His Place and Her Place, I would still be running around high on meth, committing property crimes, and my boys would be in foster care. Programs like these are so incredibly important and essential to our community, and I'm living proof of that. The support system I gained because of His Place is literally the only reason I'm not in prison right now. I was actually still going to court when I went into the program. My lawyer had already done everything he could to plead my case, and the DA wasn't having it. They still wanted me to go to prison. On the day of my sentencing, my support system filled that courtroom. And I know for a fact that's the only reason I'm not in prison right now.
Jeremy, I just want to tell you thank you for choosing yourself.
Yeah.
I remember when we first met you at His Place, when we did the ribbon cutting and the tour you gave me of your bedroom and the photos of your boys. I'll never forget it.
Yeah.
There's a lot of people in the world that have a lot of wants, and there's very few resources to be able to execute. But you did the work. You chose yourself and your sons, and I am deeply grateful for that. We have a friend in common who also graduated His Place, who's doing very well in connection with his son. It's a lot of work. I know it's really hard work. And I hope that you continue to choose yourself and your children and the life that's ahead of you and lean hard on the support group that includes Terry and Candace and the Board of Commissioners, who are going to continue to invest in programs like Her Place and His Place because we know they make a difference. So I just want to personally say I'm really proud of you and I'm really grateful for the choices that you've made because it's made my life better, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. At this time, Candace is going to share.
Hello. My name is Candace Aguilera. And it's honored to be here today. And it is by the grace of God that I'm standing here today to tell my story of strength and survival. My story and my recovery journey started at the age of six. I grew up in a single-parent home with my older siblings unknowingly showing me and my younger brother how to party and use drugs. Even though they thought that we were busy playing video games while they were in the other room having fun, we were like little sponges, and nothing, I mean, nothing got by us. I can still remember digging through the ashtrays, getting roaches out. To all you normies, that's a marijuana cigarette already rolled. At first, we were not very good, but by age six, I began to smoke pot. The problem wasn't because of my lack of skills. The problem was that it just took one time to know that I loved the excitement of the whole thing. By the age of nine, we moved to California, and I found a new street family, and I started using methamphetamines, drinking, and smoking cigarettes, living the dream, or so I thought. Life was fun for a while. When I turned 21, I got pregnant with my first daughter. I thought I could just calm down, quit, and start a family. That was false. And it never worked out the way I had planned it out in my head. I wanted to be sober and to be the best mom I could be to my now five kids, ages six, seven, 13, 17, and 20. But things took a sharp turn with every failed attempt to quit on my own, and there were many. The failed attempts continued for many years, and I was trapped in the cycle of addiction until I was 37 and stopped trying to do things on my own and decided to go all in and hand it over to God. I made the decision to enter the Her Place program on January 31st, 2023, and have never looked back to the cycle that had me stuck for so many years. It wasn't until that day that I started to feel like I truly found out who I am without substances as a mom and as a woman in recovery. Being at Her Place, God guided me and gave me the courage, the community, and the new skills to not just survive, but to thrive for the first time in my life. Being at Her Place, I was able to fall apart and rebuild my life with myself, God, and my family. I was able to build new relationships with staff and other women who supported me on this journey. My hope is to later down the road be a vessel of God and work to be able to help support other addicts like me who may not, who may be struggling and don't even know where to start. Currently, I'm in my own home with all five of my children. I am getting ready to start school at Chamacada this month in Behavioral Health Program. I just enrolled my children in a new school that I am super excited about. We live in a beautiful townhouse in the country with a park in the backyard. I am truly grateful for my life and all that God, this program, and my new Marion County community have given me. And I want to give a big thanks to Terry, Melissa, April, and Marissa. Thank you.
I'm sure Terry's mentioned this, but if not, you know we're hiring. We do internships, so as soon as you start at Chamacada, call Phil and get him on, get you on the list. Same thing for you.
Thanks.
Five children. That's impressive. I have three, and they keep me very busy. Your youngest is six?
Yes.
Girl or boy?
Boy.
And was he able to live with you at Her Place?
Yes. His name is Lucky. He's a...
His name is Lucky?
Yes.
He is. He's blessed.
Thanks.
Can you tell us about the school transportation? I met a mom last year. I usually come once a year to visit with the different moms, and I met a young mom who was transporting her son. Well, I don't actually know who was doing the transportation, but he was a gifted young man who, for the age of five that he was, had the comprehension of like a 15-year-old. I was really blown away. But there was transportation supports that the district and the county connected. Did you experience that with Lucky? Did he get to go to kindergarten?
I had both my young boys.
Okay.
When I was at Her Place, one was just turned five, the other one was four.
Oh, boy.
And so they both were transferred from Albany to Salem, Salem to Albany. And I had really good experience with my children and the help with what I got for them.
Good. Well, I'm grateful that you chose yourself and your family over the addiction and that this community could love you up so you could stabilize and be the best mom you can be for all of them. And I have no doubt, based on the things I've heard about you, that you're going to kick that program's ass and come back to work and help a lot of other people in this community, which is what we need. I'm sure it's no surprise to either of you that peers and mentors are a priority for the county because I think we understand not just the evidence-based practices of what recovery looks like, but the fact that people have walked in your shoes before can help you walk further. And I'm grateful that you want to provide service back to the community and continue to grow the stabilization that our community deserves.
Thanks.
Thank you. Every time I meet somebody who's graduated from Her Place or graduated from His Place, like... Obviously, we've met before, but I'm always so inspired by it. I think I've said this to you before, but whenever I meet somebody whose love for their children and their family is more powerful than the drugs, that's a really inspiring thing because we all know what those drugs are. We all know how powerful those drugs are. So to see the strength of your love for your children is really something. My oldest son is three, and I think the most beautiful words in the world right now are, Daddy, will you come play with me? You know, when your three-year-old comes and grabs your hand. And so as you were talking about being reunited with your son and you choked up, like, I know, it's just such a spectacular thing to have your child love you and to be able to love your child. And it's such a, just a beautiful witness that you're giving to all of us in this community. And the other thing I want to say, because there's a big roomful of people, and not everybody might know His Place and Her Place and the history there, there's a group of people in the back of this room who have built these programs over decades. So this isn't something that just happened yesterday. There's a group of people in this back of this room who are in recovery themselves, who came back and gave back to other folks in recovery. And they built a place so that moms could be with their kids when they were in recovery, so you wouldn't have to be separated from your family. And when that, that nonprofit went bankrupt, Marion County saved that program because they said, this is who we are. And I think I'm right. It was the only one in the state for many years.
Still is.
Right? And then when the opportunity came up, I remember we were negotiating with Pacific Source, and it's because you guys had this dream for a place for dads that had been kicking around, but the money was never available. And so then when the money was available, all of a sudden, it was like, let's go. But if, but if these folks hadn't spent years of their lives waiting and preparing and building, it wouldn't be there for you. And now, I'm super excited. This is one of the things that I just love about the community here, is you guys are entering into that. Now you guys, it's what you said, you're going to help other people, and you get to be part of that team that helps other people overcome their addiction and love their families. And there's just something so beautiful about that and so, kind of, we're so united in that work. And we're united across generations, we're united across the years, and we're united across experiences, and I just think that's a very spectacular thing. So I want to thank you for inspiring me again and inspiring our community again with your work and being a part of this beautiful community in recovery here in Marion County.
Commissioner Cameron?
Well, yeah. Jeremy, Candace, we're blessed to have you with us. In the first presentation, the proclamation, you looked at some of those things. It says, "Life is better with you here, and your family is better with you there, and we are better with you here." So thank you for stepping forward and making this happen in your life. And, you know, all the, all the assets that are out there don't matter until you put your foot forward and you say, "I'm going to do this." And Terry and your team, thank you for all you do. It's great to have you here, and there's so many more success stories out there. And, you know, as you described your, I was thinking, Jeremy, and you talked about your relationship with Jesus at the beginning and how many times you stumbled and how many times you were picked up and you were forgiven and you kept going on. And that's, that's the message that we need to send to people because it doesn't always happen the first time, the second time, or the third time. So thank you for what you've done. Candace, thank you for what you've done. I think we have a proclamation and...
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Commissioner Willis, would you make the motion?
I will. Madam Chair, I move that we approve a proclamation designating the month of September 2025 as Recovery Month in Marion County.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Commissioner Willis?
A matter proclaiming the month of September 2025 as Recovery Month in Marion County in proclamation. This matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled public meeting on September 3rd, 2025. Whereas, the National Recovery Month is observed each September to celebrate the millions of Americans who are in recovery from substance abuse and mental health disorders and to increase awareness and understanding of these conditions and the effectiveness of treatment. And whereas, recovery is a journey that takes strength, courage, and support, and the path to recovery is strengthened by access to evidence-based treatment, peer support, stable housing, employment opportunities, and community connection. And?
Whereas, individuals and families affected by substance abuse, substance use, and mental health disorders deserve respect, dignity, and access to care that is free from stigma and discrimination. And whereas, Marion County Health and Human Services and its community partners are dedicated to providing compassionate, person-centered, trauma-informed services that empower individuals to achieve and sustain recovery. And whereas, every story of recovery is a powerful reminder that healing is possible. Families can be reunited, and lives can be restored. And?
Whereas, we recognize and honor the contributions of those in recovery, the service providers, peers, family members, and community organizations who walk alongside them. And we recommit ourselves to supporting recovery in all its forms. And whereas, for the above reasons, we are asking the citizens of Marion County to join us in celebrating this September is Recovery Month. Now therefore, it is hereby proclaimed that the month of September 2025 is Recovery Month in Marion County and encourages all residents to support those on the path to recovery by fostering hope, reducing stigma, and promoting, excuse me, promoting health and wellness throughout our communities, dated at Salem, Oregon, this third day of September 2025. Would you take a picture with us? And all along the wall, would you please come forward so folks can see you and appreciate you? Yeah, I'd say you would be shy. Commissioner Willis, can you scooch in a little more?
Oops, sorry.
All right, ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
Here, are you ready? Three, two, one. Couple of years. Good, thank you.
Can we just give them all a big round of applause?
All right, Madam Chair, I'll move the consent calendar. First item under Board of Commissioners, the Board Appointment a Public Safety Coordinating Council, approve an order appointing Allison Kelly as a nonprofit victim services representative to the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council with a term ending September 2nd, 2028. Also, under Board of Commissioners, Marion County Quality, Water Quality Advisory Committee, approve an order appointing Gary White as an at-large member to the Marion County Water Quality Advisory Committee with a term ending August 31st, 2029. Also, under Board of Commissioners, appoint, approve and orders appointing Commissioner Kevin Cameron as chair, Frank Lonergan as vice chair, and Marjorie Traeger as an elected official representing the city of Silverton to the Marion County Material official representing the city of Silverton to the Marion County Materials Management Advisory Committee, Council, excuse me. Under Business Services, approve a private stormwater facility maintenance covenant and access easement with the city of Salem that provides the city with maintenance access rights to the stormwater management system for the new Marion County evidence building located on Almso Highway Southeast in Salem, Oregon. Under Health and Human Services, approve amendment number one for the contract for services with Developing Chances LLC to add $150,000 for service element MHS 34, providers of foster care services for a new, not to exceed grand total of $170,000 through June 30th, 2027. Under Public Works, receive notice of the hearings officer's decision approving zone change case number 25-003 Lucky Jean LLC. And finally, under Public Works, approve amendment number one to the construction contract with Knife River to add American Rescue Act funding in the amount of $124,939.95 for a new contract total of $478,709.95 to provide additional work related to vehicle access and other minor improvements for the Parkdale project, improvement project through October 17, 2025.
I second the motion.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Okay, we're going to move back up to public comment. And for the record, I'd like to notify everybody that you will have exactly two minutes per person to speak. You will come to this microphone over here. You'll need to introduce yourselves, your name and address for the record. And we would like to remind you that decorum is necessary, otherwise we will halt public comment, and we will wait for that, and we will attempt to return. This is a place of business, and we would like for respectful comment to be provided. We have 25 individuals signed up. It looks like there might be a couple of individuals on here not for the lawsuit. Is there anyone here not for the lawsuit? Would you raise your hand? Would you please come over to the microphone first, sir? Are you Tyler?
Yes.
Wonderful. Would you like to sit, Tyler? Okay.
3466 Chief's Court Northeast and 97305. I'm here simply to hopefully get the ball moving, but around the corner in the chariots public, or in the customer service lobby, the male restroom, short, the left-hand urinal, this one that I would use as a short person, has been out of order or needing repair for about two months total, with the last six weeks-ish it being fully taped off. I know that it's a partnership between you guys and them. I don't know who takes care of the quote, "physical plant," but there are lots of people that use that bathroom.
Well, thank you for showing up and letting us know. Jan, our administrator, will make sure she works with Alan to get that fixed as soon as possible.
I'm more than happy to have a word with you when the meeting's done, too, if you, if that works.
Don't wait two months next time.
Well, I mean, again, I don't always hear during business hours to go upstairs to talk to, I talked to Karen briefly this morning with the chariots.
She's a security person.
Yes.
Okay.
But yeah, we'll talk when the meeting's done. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Tyler. Okay, I'm going to go back to the top of this list and start with Kathleen. Is it Treppa?
Yes.
And on deck will be Margot, Margot, is it Rudd or Rude? I apologize. Great, you'll be next.
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Kathleen Treppa. I live here in the city of Salem, and I am here to vehemently oppose any undermining or erosion of Oregon's state sanctuary laws. I'm a retired local government professional, and I'm also the daughter of an immigrant. My father was born during the Spanish Civil War and raised under a fascist dictatorship. My family understands the oppression of fascism and the oppression of nationalized and nationalist Christianity. Trump came into power preaching he was tough on crime and blaming immigrants for crime. Well, it's not immigrants that perpetrate the majority of crime in the United States, it's American citizens born right here in the good old U.S.A. As elected officials who took an oath of office to uphold the Constitution, both state and federal, as I did multiple times, you should be upset that the constitutionally protected rights of due process and people's civil rights are being violated. As human beings, you should be disgusted by the videos of people being abducted by masked thugs with no IDs, no warrants, getting kidnapped and thrown into vans while families shriek and protest in fear. Your heart should break for how these people are being treated while in custody. They're being demeaned, and they're being subjected to conditions that are absolutely abhorrent. And if that isn't enough, from a purely practical, economic standpoint, you were elected to serve your constituents, all of them, to ensure their safety and well-being and to support a strong economy. How does kidnapping fieldhands, car wash employees, dishwashers, nursing home aides, construction workers, tradespeople, and anyone else help small businesses and family farms? Have you read about farmers losing hundreds of thousands of dollars because of migrant workers that they employ having shown up to help with harvest? Have you read about farmers losing, the bankruptcies, the rate of farm bankruptcies in the Midwest? Are you watching or reading any news sources other than Fox News? These people have contributed to our economies everywhere through their hard work and through the taxes that they paid.
Thank you, Kathleen. It's a pleasure to have you here today. Thanks for being here. Margot? And next, after Margot, no, she did not do that. This will not happen here. If you continue to clap, we'll just cease public comment. As I stated before, you're welcome to do the ASL, clapping all you want, but we will not do physical hand clap in this, we have limited time today for this public comment. Next on deck will be Becky Beeman.
My name is Margot Rudd, and I'm a longtime Salem resident. I live at 501...
Would you mind pulling the microphone a little closer? Thank you.
I'm sorry. Margot Rudd, 5014 Cumberland Court Southeast, 97306. And I, I'm a longtime Salem resident, and I want to voice my support for Oregon's sanctuary laws. I know that the current resident of the White House has demonized immigrants in this country, calling them animals, saying they're poisoning the blood of our country and accusing them of eating people's pets. These are terribly unjust statements. I grew up with several immigrant relatives, and they were hardworking individuals who contributed to the Salem community. One started a business in Salem in the mid-'70s, and it is still operating today. His mother spoke no English, but she taught me how to count in Cantonese. She sewed clothing for her grandchildren and grew a huge vegetable garden, and she shared with the neighbors. She was a sweet, kind lady. I know other immigrants in our community, and they are good citizens, and I consider some of them to be very good friends. Commissioner Bethel has said, we want to keep dangerous people out of our community and off our streets. Well, a substantial body of research shows that immigrants, including undocumented immigrants, are significantly less likely to be incarcerated or commit crimes than natural-born American citizens. The perception that immigrants increase crime is a common misconception that is not supported by decades of data. In 2023, native-born American incarceration rates, that's, our native-born Americans, all of us, not Native Americans, but all of us that are born here, the incarceration rate was 1,221 per 100,000, while it was 613 per 100,000 for illegal immigrants, and 319 per 100,000 for legal immigrants, according to a Cato Institute study. A Texas study found that...
Margot, thank you for your time today.
I time up already?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. Becky Beeman, and next will be Barry Shapiro. Yes, sir. If you'd like to join her next in that green chair, you're welcome to. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Becky Beeman. I live at 3280 Elder Berry Drive South in Salem. I'm here to speak in opposition to the lawsuit. I know that now that COVID is in the rearview mirror, and we've spent all the money that this federal government gave us in addition to our own, things are getting tight in the advent of Measures 5 and 50. And our income to our county is less, and our ability to accomplish the priorities that are assigned to us is less. There are many needs in Marion County that are not adequately addressed. In particular, I will bring up public health, including mental health. I'll bring up the homelessness crisis. I'll bring up disaster preparation, in particular, preparation for the Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake, which I do not believe we are anywhere near prepared for. There are things that need our money more than a lawsuit that tries to compare federal to local resources and says, I'd like to spend local resources doing the federal government's job. The constituents don't agree. We made it clear, and I think we should stop trying to spend taxpayer money doing the federal government's job.
Thanks for being here, Becky. Barry, and then Linda Garland.
Hi, my name is Barry Shapiro. I live in Silverton.
I'm with you.
I have my reading glasses, I have my eyeglasses. I had things prepared to say. The suicide prevention proclamation, the recovery proclamation, they're indicative of giving people a second chance. They're indicative of compassion and caring for our community and the people who make it up. In the past, I've, I've worked in gang intervention, both here in Salem and in Los Angeles. I've taught art to incarcerated kids in the Oregon Youth Authority. I'm a firm believer of second chances. The sanctuary laws are about giving second chances. They're about the basis of this country. We need to continue to be compassionate. I've been one of the people, one of the thousands, who have stood on Center Street with signs, with rallies. The camaraderie, the encouragement has been awesome, has been really, again, the essence of what this country is. We, we're going far from the American dream. The lawsuit is indicative of that destruction of the American dream.
Barry, I appreciate your time today. Thank you for being here.
Okay.
Linda Garland, and then next is Melinda, is it Yost? Great. Thanks for doing that. Thanks for doing that.
I prepared a lot more words than this, but most people have said what I feel. So I just want to say...
Just, I'm sorry to interrupt. Would you introduce yourself and your residence for the record?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm Linda Garland, and my zip code is 97302 SD10, House District 19, Ward 4.
Thank you.
And I'm going to say, please do not overturn Oregon's four-decade-old sanctuary law. It's wrong, and it will harm our agricultural community and disrupt the lives of our friends and neighbors.
Thank you for being here. No applause. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Melinda? And then next will be Larry, I think it says Ramsey? Ramsey?
Larry Ramsey.
Larry Ramsey?
He's famous in our heart.
I'm sorry?
He's famous in our heart.
Perfect. I look forward to meeting him. Linda, the floor is yours.
My name is Melinda Yost, and I live at 2010 Hazel Avenue in Salem, Oregon. I am frankly disgusted that my county representatives would basically hand the keys to the Gestapo. People in masks coming into our cities, no badge, nothing, just snatching people off the street. That is what happened in Pinochet's regime. And it really makes me angry as hell to think that I even have to address this with my elected representatives.
Please keep your comments to yourself and the audience. Thank you.
My representatives are supposed to represent me and everybody else, everybody else, not just white, lily-white people. They are supposed to represent everybody. And you are not doing that by trying to roll back this law and, and help, help the president out by yanking all these people out of here, separating from them. People that are not the worst of the worst. These are honor students, people, children that need medical care to stay alive. They are out there hurting other people. And frankly, as a Christian person, I find that repulsive, and I looked to a sign and I said the other day, who would Jesus depart? Damn it. I think he would...
Thank you, Melinda, for being here and for sharing your thoughts. Larry? I know it's hard for y'all. Larry Ramsey, and then Ray Quisenberry?
My name is Larry Ramsey. I live 285 Southeast 16th Street, 97301. I have deep connections in the Willam, mid-Willamette Valley, both my parents and went to high school in Malala. I have kin buried in graveyards from Eugene to Portland and towns in between. I knew, I know when there was no whiskey in Whiskey Hill and how liberal is not liberal. Every person in this room can find an ancestor who migrated here from somewhere not here. They weren't called illegals in those days, but they were accused of many of the same crimes as these people of color that Republicans can't abide. Some may have been guilty, some might not have been, might have been hanged unfairly. Many just wanted a better place to live, free from the oppression their extended families grew up with. I'm proud to live in a blue state. I'm proud of Oregon's history, from Tom McCall, Mark Hatfield, and Bob Packwood, who would were tolerable Republicans, to Wayne Morris before them, who couldn't tolerate remaining a Republican, to Maureen Newberger, who was a woman legislator when few existed. We are no longer a sundown state, a racist state. That does not mean racism doesn't exist. The good commissioners of Marion County are exhibit one. Sanctuary status has been around for 30-odd years. We even voted to retain it when someone thought it was not needed. Attorney General Bondi is no less racist. She serves a president who is without question racist, and he is supported by a party that is too timid to oppose the guy taking our Constitution and Bill of Rights from us. Oregon is a sovereignty state.
Thank you for being here, Larry. We appreciate your feedback. Ray? And then on deck will be Andrew Davis.
Good morning. Hi, my name is Ray Quisenberry. I live at 925th Street Northeast, just up the street from here.
I'm just dying to ask, are you connected to the pharmacy?
No, I get that question all the time.
Do you get that all the time?
I should wear a t-shirt.
Well, I had really cool trinkets when it was around.
Well, like everyone else, many people here are speaking against the county suing the governor over our sanctuary laws. If you have questions about these laws, talk to Dan Rayfield. He can explain this very well, even though we've been living under this for decades. So I don't see why you have to go to the courts to get these answers. Do you remember the Measure 105 back in 2018 where the voters rejected the proposal to repeal the law? So there's strong public support for these laws. And we can't have people being afraid of the police, afraid of going to them to report crimes. That makes us all less safe. I was just thinking about this, thinking about an undocumented woman... I was just thinking about this, thinking about an undocumented woman being raped and not being able to report the crime because she's feared, fear of being sent back to where she came from, where there's plenty of other fear to deal with. So please drop your suit and work with the state to determine the best path forward to fight for all Oregonians against this reckless administration. Resist the hate, and please reaffirm our values. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Mr. Davis, and then after that will be Julie Rae Joy.
Good morning. Andrew Davis, 255 Kenwood Avenue Northeast in Salem, 97301. You may remember, it was in front of you a few years ago talking about-
Your street name has, like, serious recollection. I'm just kidding. We all know about Kenwood. We've talked about it like a million times.
Yeah, and the first time we came here and asked for help, you weren't able to do anything, or you chose not to do anything. I'm not sure which it was. Apparently recently, you've decided you can do something about that. So apparently you are amenable to logic and to open-mindedness and changing your mind. I'd encourage you to change your mind about this frivolous lawsuit, which is a waste of county time and money and resources. As we've seen demonstrated earlier today, there's much better use of our time and money than this stupid lawsuit. You proclaim fear of dangerous people on our streets. Most of us feel that ICE represents the danger, not our immigrant neighbors. Ms. Bethel, harbor a strong suspicion that this isn't about good public policy. This is about increasing your profile in support of your race for governor, and I don't think you should be using county resources to promote yourself in that way. Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks for being here. Julie Rae Joy, and then next is Haley, is it Pale or Paley?
Good morning. My name is Julie Rae Joy. My zip code is 97303. This lawsuit is not about public safety. It is about political posturing at the expense of immigrant families and our shared values. For nearly four decades, this policy has protected community trust, reduced racial profiling, and kept neighborhoods safer. Here you are talking about suicide prevention while you are creating untenable situations for Oregon families, that are creating financial instability, uncertainty, where numerous detainees in the Tacoma ICE facility, where our detainees are going, have attempted suicide. The political grandstanding is high-key. I would have at least a minute amount of respect for you if you were just honest about that. Speaking about belonging, acceptance, et cetera, while working to rip families apart is crazy work. Talking about recovery and honoring that, while the separation of families and financial instability greatly increase the likelihood of drug and alcohol abuse, we cannot have it both ways. This undermines public safety. It opens the door for continued racial profiling and civil rights violations. It wastes local resources. It ignores the will of Oregon voters, which we voted in 1987, and again in 2008 with a two-thirds majority, and it harms the Oregon families and communities. Tens of thousands of our families live in mixed-status families. Repealing this law would destabilize households, tear families apart, and sow fear in schools, workplaces, and neighborhoods. Do the will of the people you serve. And make no mistake, we will be mobilizing in November 2026.
All right, Haley, you're up, and then Thomas Ellis.
Hello, my name is Haley Polly, and I live on 724 South Water Street in Silverton, Oregon, 97381. You've said a couple times, or I've seen it in the literature, that you wanted this to be safer. You want it to be safer. But, and then today, sitting here, I heard the board members say several times the phrase, "evidenced base." The evidence is saying that this is a waste of money, and I would like to know, probably can't answer at this moment, but I would like to know how much you estimate this is going to cost, because I would rather give it to either the suicide prevention people that were here or the recovery people. It's a waste of money. The people do not want it. It is unpopular. You guys are going against the will of the people. It's wrong. You guys are wrong.
Thanks for being here. Thomas, and then next is Peter, is it Burge?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Let's have to get this thing back on. There we go. Okay. My name is Thomas Ellis. I'm a retired professor living at 4553 Fur Dell Drive Southeast in Salem. In ordinary times, I would have no objection to the suit you have filed seeking clarification from both state and federal authorities regarding enforcement of federal immigration laws in cases where a potential conflict exists with the state sanctuary laws we have enacted in Oregon, especially with regard to convicted criminals. But these are not ordinary times. The current Trump regime, and particularly the Attorney General and the Secretary of Homeland Security, have repeatedly demonstrated their utter contempt for the due process and the rule of law as they pursue a draconian roundup, incarceration, and deportation of immigrants throughout the nation, the vast majority of whom are honest, hard-working mothers and fathers and children. I'm talking to you.
Continue to keep your comments to the audience to yourself.
Okay. Innocent in any crime, other than being undocumented. Fine word, undocumented. But what does that actually mean? Our immigration laws are so baroque and complex that it can take a would-be immigrant from Mexico up to 20 years to gain the U.S. citizenship most of us were born with. And most of these people crossing the borders are refugees from severe economic hardships, a hotter and drier climate, political persecution, or violent cartels terrorizing their communities. They came here hoping to seek a better life for their children. Now, I would pretty much guess that most of the people in this room have ancestors who were immigrants and came for the exact same purpose.
Thank you for being here, Thomas.
I'm not quite finished yet.
Well, your time is up, so we're going to move on to Peter Burge. Thank you. And after that will be Elise Strauss, and then finally, Chris, is it, I'm going to get it wrong, Byfokel. Sorry about that.
Good morning, members of the commission. My name is Peter Burge. I live in Salem. A number of us are wearing these stickers which say, "Resist every way you can," and we are patriots and who believe in the Constitution of the United States. Maybe you'd stand if you agree with that. Specifically, we believe that the Fourth Amendment in the Bill of Rights protects every person, citizen or not, in the United States. It says simply enough that the right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures shall not be violated. It has been clear for some time, and especially since Donald Trump's first and second presidencies began, that this right is being regularly abridged by the federal Immigration and Customs Enforcement, the ICE goon squads. And that is a fact, and it requires no lawsuit to be established. Further, it is quite clear to any honest person that ICE is targeting particular classes of people, and that violates the equal treatment principle of the Constitution enunciated in the Fourteenth Amendment. Now, we're not here to quibble about the legal conflicts that Marion County's lawsuit claims to be confused by. We're here to affirm that we expect our local government to abide by the Constitution, and if the Constitution is being violated by ICE or anyone else, we expect the county to be, to protect our citizens against those who are doing the violating. Now, we ask that you drop your lawsuit and instead turn your attention to protecting the Marion, the county, citizens of Marion County against those who would violate their constitutional rights. And that is what you swore to do when you took office and promised to defend the Constitution against all enemies, foreign and domestic. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here. Elise, and then finally, Chris.
Hi, my name's Elise Strauss. I live in Salem. It's really interesting to me that you chose to file this lawsuit instead of just picking up the phone and talking to Rayfield or COTAC.
Assuming we didn't already do that.
That's not cutting it either.
Well, tell Rayfield the same.
Yeah. This smacks to me of virtue signaling to the Trump administration that you're willing to be a team player. The sanctuary laws are very explicit, and we're supposed to be team players in this because it doesn't just stop with information from the prisons. They want information from everybody. This ICE is a Gestapo organization. Chief Womack told me that they're federal officers doing a job. That's bullshit. This is a fascist organization and regime, and I think you're virtue signaling to Trump that you're willing to be a team player. And to these sheriffs that have signed on and are confused about the sanctuary laws and you don't know if you should protect people or not, shame on you. Shame on you. Shame on all of you. You sounded really good and empathetic and compassionate with the people that were here. But the fact that you're bailing on the sanctuary laws and pretending confusion or trying to cover your asses, it's not cutting it. It's not cutting it.
Thanks for being here. All right, and finally, Chris.
Hi, my name is Chris Byfokel. I'm in northeast Salem, 97301. Really appreciate everybody who's spoken before me, so I'm not going to rehash what they've said, but I am going to circle back to this being Suicide Prevention Month. My life's work has been in suicide prevention. I've been doing that work for about 15 years now, including five years at the state level here in Oregon, specifically for our youth suicide prevention work, and I've worked very closely with our colleagues here that spoke this morning. One thing that I want to highlight from our state numbers is that we have achieved reductions in suicide rates for white youth and no other youth of any other race or ethnicity. And so bringing it back to the conversation we're having here, sanctuary laws, belonging, those things are inextricably linked to suicide prevention. And I'll just say, the longer that you are in the work of suicide prevention and supporting it, the more you see these linkages. I could go on, but one of the big theories that we use is called the interpersonal theory of suicide prevention, where two things that are predictive of suicide are thwarted belongingness and perceived burdensomeness, and then the capability to end one's life, so that sense of hopelessness as well. Those three things come together. And when we do things like tell people they don't belong in our communities, that they don't deserve to be here, that they're criminals for trying to perceive, trying to obtain a better life, or just for their mere presence here amidst broken systems, we are increasing capability for suicide. We also are decreasing people's help-seeking behaviors. As Kelly mentioned before, some of the numbers and increases that we're seeing in people calling things like 988 are because it has been shown to be safe to talk about these things, safe to reach out for help. And because of what we're seeing with ICE, we're hearing on a national level that people are afraid to call 988, afraid to reach out for help, because they are afraid that that is going to bring immigration to their doorsteps. My biggest fear has been that we will see a rise in suicides because of this.
Thank you for being here.
Please reconsider.
And thank you for your work. Okay, we are going to complete public comment for the day and move on to our first item under action. Public Works to consider approval of early work amendment number four to the construction manager general contractor with Slaton Constructors to add not to exceed amount of $961,964.50. Have a good day. Thank you. Thank you for coming today. Thank you for being here. Have a good day. All right. Hi. I missed halfway through that paragraph, so you know what you're doing. Let's talk about Slaton.
Yeah, for the record, Shane Odison, Marion County Public Works. I'm here to bring forth the early work amendment for the-
Hold on one second, Shane. Sheriff Hunter, would you ask the deputies to move the individuals out of the vestibule so we can have the TV be able to pick up comment? Thank you. Shane, please continue.
So I'm here to bring forth the early work amendment for the contract, PW5864-24, with Slaton Contractors. And this early work is for the procurement design of both the 750,000-gallon steel water reservoir that will be installed in our water campus, and also the design of the pure aggregate foundation that will support that steel reservoir. And so this is an important work to get out front because it has a long lead time. It's typically about eight months' lead time for both the design of the tank and the foundation, as well as procuring the tank. So in order to keep our project on track, to get this built before the end of next year, we need to get this amendment signed.
Okay.
So it would increase the contract in the amount of $961,564.50 for a total contract amount of $1,899,719.50.
All right. Any questions, commissioners, comments? If not, Commissioner Willis, I'll take a motion, please.
Keep it going.
All right, Madam Chair, I move that we approve the early work amendment number four, the construction manager general contractor contract with Slaton Constructors Incorporated to add the not to exceed amount of $961,564.50 for a new contract total of $1,899,719.50 for the supply and installation of a 750,000-gallon steel reservoir and foundation for the Brooks Hot Mirror Water Improvement Project through December 31st, 2026.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. And under discussion for the record, I need to declare a potential conflict of interest due to my son being an operator for Slaton. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Okay, and then you're up again. Talk about Slaton again.
So I'm also here to consider the approval of earlier work amendment number five. So this is another amendment to the same contract that was kind of expedited, I guess, so we can get the contractor out there to start working. So this would be for the site work that'll be out there at the water campus location. So this will be for both mobilizing, prepping the site, getting rock down, getting some storm facilities constructed, also installing underground piping that will be needed for the reservoir and the pump station, and kind of some other miscellaneous items that will kind of get the work started so that it can kind of keep the project on track as well. So this would be a amendment in the contract in the amount of $1,187,849.50 for a new contract total of $3,087,569. And this would, I believe, would be the last early work amendment before the guaranteed not to exceed contract that will be coming in likely October.
Okay, and also for the record, I'm declaring a potential conflict of interest. Is there any questions or comments, commissioners? Nope? Okay, Commissioner Cameron.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the early work amendment number five to the construction manager general contractor contract with Slaton Contractors, Inc., to add the not to exceed amount of $1,187,849.50 for a new contract total of $3,087,569 that allows the contractor to mobilize and start site civil improvements while the facility design is being finalized for the Brooks Hot Mirror Water Improvement Project through December 31st, 2026.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Are you none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. And finally, thank you, Shane. Andrew is going to come up and talk to us about a contract for services with Clean Earth Environmental Solutions.
Good morning, commissioners. For the record, Andrew Johnson, Public Works, here to bring to you a contract for approval with Clean Earth Environmental Solutions. The contract is for a total amount of $1.5 million. It's a three-year contract with an option to extend with board approval. This contract will allow for the operation of our household hazardous waste facility located at the Salem Kaiser Recycling Transfer Station. This facility offers the residents of Marion County safe and environmentally responsible means and method of disposing of any of their household chemicals and stuff like that without having to throw it in the garbage. This also facilitates, sorry, facilitates an agreement with Yamhill County and Polk County for their residents to also utilize this contract for their residents to have residents to also utilize this contract for their residents to have safe disposal of the household hazardous waste.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Commissioners, you have any questions?
No, I think we talked about this.
We did.
Yeah.
I think it's important so we don't put toxic waste, and I say "we," meaning the public, in the forest. All right, Commissioner Willis.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the contract for services of Clean Earth Environmental Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $1,500,000 for the operation of the Marion County Household Hazardous Waste Facility at the Salem Kaiser Recycling and Transfer Station and off-site collection services through September 30th, 2028.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes.
Aye.
Oops, sorry.
Well, you didn't need my aye. You had to.
That's true. I was just moving right along with it, but I do want this, so thank you so much for your vote. Therefore, it's unanimous. And that's the last item under action. I just want to say that I appreciate when individuals of the public come and share their perspective with us. What's a little frustrating for me today is the unwillingness to engage in a conversation or true understanding around the lawsuit. While it's true, there are things happening at the federal level that there's no way I have any ability to control or even make a phone call for, and behaviors that I don't agree with through the government federally and locally. I think it's really unfair that we have residents in this community who state that they have read the lawsuit and yet choose to impose their beliefs on the intent of that lawsuit. Several individuals today spoke about our duty to uphold the Constitution, the oath that we took, which also includes the state and the federal government, and the administrative subpoenas that we received puts us in conflict of that oath, being, being essentially harmed by one party or the other if we don't take some form of action. And whether that was premeditated by the federal government or not, I have no knowledge to say otherwise. I also find it to be very frustrating that there's individuals that assume that we didn't do the local due diligence and make the phone calls to local partners such as the Attorney General Dan Rayfield, who literally remained silent to this county and the other counties who had received administrative subpoenas through this process. That's not leadership. That's leaving counties at the local level to be harmed. I find that to be very frustrating. We have to do what is required by the law. We have two laws that we must comply with. One is at the state level and one is at the federal level. And for me, this is the only way I saw forward, to be able to honor the oath I took between the state and the federal constitution, to allow a neutral party, which is a court, to determine an outcome as to what we can and cannot do, and who can and cannot harm this county. I also think it's important for the public to understand that the harm that the state can impose on the county is directly service-related. The governor and the legislature have the ability to reduce the funds that they pass through us to provide services in behavioral health, community corrections, and numerous other systems of care that make this county healthy and prosperous. And it is no secret that if we don't comply with what they want at the state level, specifically the governor, she will take action. I don't think it's appropriate that we, in turn, harm the residents of this community because of the fight between the governor, the state attorney general, the president, and the federal attorney general. I personally believe this lawsuit is important to be able to find an outcome that allows me to continue to govern and provide services in this county in a healthy way. So I'll continue to sit and listen to people who want to have a healthy conversation, but to throw names and to be angry without the original conversation is misguided for me and unnecessary. So I appreciate the time that we spent today, colleagues, through public comment, and would encourage members of the public to reach out and have a conversation if they really want to understand the scope of the challenges we face as the elected leaders in this county.
Yeah, there was some, there was some misinformation about what the lawsuit was.
Right.
There was some conversation about children. I just want to kind of clarify for the record. Steve, the request from the federal government, that was for information regarding to which individuals. There were individuals on parole, is that right?
Yeah, let me just pull up so we get the exact specifics here. The first subpoena was for information for a named individual who is a level-one sex offender and is on parole in Marion County for three convictions of rape in the first degree and two convictions of sexual abuse in the second degree. The second subpoena to Marion County was for a named individual who is a level-one sex offender and is on parole in Marion County for one conviction of rape in the first degree and one conviction of sexual abuse in the first degree. The third subpoena to Marion County was seeking records for a named individual who is on parole in Marion County for two convictions of sexual abuse in the first degree. The fourth subpoena was seeking records of a named individual who is on parole in Marion County for one conviction of kidnapping in the first degree and one conviction of robbery in the first degree. The fifth subpoena to Marion County was for an individual whose identify, identity we were unable to determine, and the federal government has since withdrawn that subpoena. All of that information is in the lawsuit that we filed that is a public record on paragraphs 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15 of the lawsuit.
And this information, if a, if a ordinary citizen came and asked for it, the public records laws of the state of Oregon would compel us to release that information to that individual, correct?
That is correct. Any person who requested information that the administrative subpoenas requested would be entitled to receive that information under Oregon public records laws.
So it's really important for the record that this declaratory action, where we're asking the court to tell us what the law is, is because the federal government asked us for information about four individuals who have been convicted of serious felony crimes in Marion County. And if a citizen asks for that information under the public records laws, we would be required by law to provide that information to any other citizen. And that's what sets up the conflict with the amended sanctuary law. This is the other thing, is that there are individuals who are talking about the sanctuary law has been on the books for 40 years. That's actually not where the conflict is. The sanctuary law was changed in 2021.
Yes.
To specifically prohibit the release of this information to immigration authorities, which creates the legal question, which is, on the one hand, we're required by public records laws to release this information; on the other hand, the new sanctuary law that was changed in 2021 prohibits us from releasing this information specifically because of the type of individual who's releasing it. So it's limited to four individuals who have been convicted of felony crimes in Marion County, and the conflict is between our obligations to public records laws and to Oregon's amended sanctuary law. So this is...
Just to be clear, it's the requester, not the...
The requester, excuse me, yeah.
Yes, the conflict is who's the requester.
Who's the requester. So this is not about children. This is not about the Trump administration's general policy. We don't make immigration policy here in Marion County, but we do have to follow the law. We all took an oath to follow the law, and we're trying to follow the law. And in this case, we're in a situation where we don't know what that law is, and so we're asking the court to tell us what the law is so that we can comply with the law. There was a lot of information, a lot of things that people said that is not true about what this lawsuit is or what we are doing. And I just want to make sure that the public, people in this room, understand that a lot of what was said is just not true. We're trying to follow the law. We're trying to do the best we can, and I believe what we're doing is absolutely consistent with our work helping folks in recovery, our work helping folks, you know, try to prevent suicide in our community. I don't see any inconsistency at all, and it comes from a place where we're trying to honor the people we serve and the community that we serve.
If I could just add one other point consistent with that is the Oregon Sanctuary Promise Act itself, in ORS 180.805 subsection 2, says, quote, "Accept as required by state or federal law," end quote. So the Sanctuary Promise Act itself has an exception for when federal law has requirements. And so the question is, what does the federal law require, and how does that interact with what is actually in the sanctuary law itself? So there are multiple questions that have not been resolved, which is why 34 sheriffs out of 36 have agreed that clarity is needed.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cameron, would you like to add anything for the record before we adjourn today?
Well, I was pretty moved by what we did before public comment, and there was some things said there that were pretty hurtful, and was kind of disappointed, you know, in what was said because of people's either misunderstanding or their anger or whatever it was. A couple of things. One, and I wanted to defend you, Chair Befal, about, somebody said that about your quote. Well, the quote was in context with what counsel just read of protecting the citizens of Marion County. The comment about spending taxpayer dollars, and Steve, you can just tell me, we haven't used any outside counsel on this, is that correct?
We have not used any outside counsel, and we have no plans to do so.
Right, so we're using existing resources that, by the way, you might have had to spend an hour overtime or so, but we didn't pay him overtime.
He didn't get paid overtime.
We didn't get paid overtime. My point being is...
Don't start that, Commissioner Cameron.
These are existing resources that we have on staff. So, and, and I haven't seen any of your other work not get done while you were doing this or your, or your staff. The one gentleman who started to say that he would support this, that he had a right, he said, "I would support this in any other time." Well, this is the time that we, we were faced with, with this situation that we needed answers to. Somebody mentioned an undocumented woman being raped, right? It doesn't matter whether she was documented or undocumented, somebody raped people, and this, this is just one of those things that, I, I, you know, I just don't know what to say other than the fact that there's a lot of people in here that, I probably understand them because they get bits and pieces. They don't get the whole story. They don't understand what we're really looking at at the time, and, you know, if you look at the, the invite to come here today, you know, that was on social media, it doesn't say anything about really what the lawsuit's about, it just talks about, "We're trying to overturn Oregon's sanctuary laws," and that is not what we're trying to do here. So I will say this to my two colleagues and to staff, after being here for, Jan, how long now, 11 years, 12 years, whatever it is, I've been in, and by the way, you handled the public testimony really well, I've been in a lot of these meetings, a few that get heated. This is one of those where, as people walked out the door, I went, wow, they're, you know, talk about civility, and I think a lack of at times. It's just one of those things where I just, you keep going on, you keep doing the best you can, as the oath says, to the best of my ability to support both constitutions. It's in the oath. And, you know, I just want to say thank you for my, to my colleagues and to staff, to be able to be here and listen. I want to thank the people that showed up today to, to get their opinion. I wish they, or to say their opinion, I wish that they could have a little bit more information and understand that I personally, and I think, I'm not going to speak for my other two board members, but I love all people, and it doesn't matter. Everybody has a number one on their forehead, but in this case, we're doing our job of trying to answer a question that's before us. That's what it is. That's all it is. And hopefully, we can have some semblance of civility as we move forward.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your comments and for your support. It's clear that when a particular group of individuals wants to spread a message, they're going to pick and choose the statements that were made in order for that message to be delivered, which is why they used my quote out of context in the recruitment of coming to today and then also today's statement, which is really unfortunate. What wasn't mentioned today at all during public comment, as Steve reported on and Commissioner Willis requested, was the five convicted criminals who have created lifetime impacts on the victims in our community, and the unmeasurable amount of resources that does not exist for those victims and their family members to attempt to recover from the harm that was done to them. It's absurd to me that we want to make this a one-sided debate or argument with, without all the facts. And just for the final statement for today, for the, for the person who brought forward the comment that there was a woman in our community who was raped, and she was too fearful of deportation to come forward for any level of report or help, in Oregon, if you believe in the sanctuary law, that shouldn't even be a thing. For everybody that testified today who believes that sanctuary law is ironclad, then anybody who is a victim of any crime, regardless of their citizenship status, should be able to come forward and file a report and receive help. This county itself invests a significant amount of money in victim services and resources to protect everybody who lives in Marion County regardless of immigration status. I have never once in my life asked anybody who's ever come forward for help for a verse certificate or a green card or any other form of documentation that's irrelevant to me when they are in harm's way and they need help, and I will not begin to do that today because the Oregon law prohibits me from doing that. It's also not the right thing to do. So if there's anybody in my community that needs any level of help whatsoever, there is no wrong door in Marion County for access to receive that help. Call the sheriff's office, call the board's office. Somebody will get you the help that you deserve because you matter to us. Thank you for everybody's time and for your work to support the county and the services we offer to our neighbors. We're adjourned.